Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Medfield School Committee meeting of Monday, August 24. It's our first meeting after quite a while, so we have a full agenda. We have some minutes to approve although, are you there recording or do you?
Me.
You're there, okay, so it's not Eileen, so we can do both the minutes tonight. We have a presentation for Mrs. Potts on the, and the Green Sanctuary Committee. Facilities update, we have to vote to distribute certain funds from the Madeline Grant Scholarship, and vote to approve an amendment to the tech collaborative agreement. And then Dr. Marsden's got some updates on the new elementary math program, the Wheeler-Boiler project, the Dale Street parking lot, and some upcoming initiatives. So without further ado, can we take up the minutes, Anna?
Sure, I think we've all reviewed them, and I'd like to approve them.
All right, can we vote, can we vote the May 18th minutes first?
Oh yes, May 18th, yes.
Is, is our motion approved in the minutes from May 18?
Yes, there is a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And we also, is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes from May 18?
Oh, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, good. And we're on a roll, how about the June 8th minutes? Is our motion approved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, and the June 8th executive session?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the, where were we?
June 15.
June 15.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And was there an executive session that day? There was.
Yes.
So is there a motion for the executive session?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Wasn't that fun?
Yeah.
Efficient.
Dr. Marsden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Potts has contacted me to discuss the no idling zone in schools, and I know that she had come across some buses last year that were idling, and had talked to the bus company, and they, she called them and they stopped doing that immediately, but I think she wants to do a presentation to kind of give the committee an overview. This is, I think it, the law changed five years ago on that, or four years ago?
You know?
I was in a former district when it happened, but I do remember when the law came into place.
I think it was longer ago than that.
Was it?
Yeah, it was a while ago.
I don't remember exactly, but I can find out there really.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome you back. Mrs. Potts told me as we were walking in that she taught here for many years, so.
Oh nice.
Thank you. Looks a lot different than when I taught here. There.
I'm so excited you're doing this. It, it makes me crazy when people start their cars in the winter to warm them up supposedly, and when they don't turn off their engines and...
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, it's kind of, I agree with you, and yet, I have some ideas that hopefully we'll be able to attack it in, how should I say, a nice way or a way, but we'll go from there, and I'll explain to you about that, okay? Again, I'm Eve Potts from the, member of the First Parish Green Sanctuary Committee. And did you know that the legal limits on idling your car is five minutes, according to the Massachusetts state law? Penalties for not abiding this law is $100 for the first offense and $500 for the second offense. My committee is starting a campaign in Medfield against idling of cars, and we need to support, the support of the community. The Medfield Energy Committee and the Selectmen have already supposed, supported us. And the Selectmen have suggested that we contact you and also the Police Department in regard to putting no idling signs at our schools in Medfield. Wellesley, Wakefield, and Lincoln Sudbury already have signs at their schools. Many people are not aware of this Massachusetts law, and it is rarely enforced or publicized, but is beginning to change due to the anti-idling campaigns that other towns are starting. And we are starting ours in Medfield. Again, we feel strongly that we start, we started first with the Selectmen, and we work down to have a town's support. The following suggestions to help enforce this law at our schools are, well, first of all, I'll do a little side, in that I have a daughter who lives in Lincoln Sudbury, and she said to me, "Oh, are you kidding?" She said, "We have those signs all over the place, but no one goes, no one abides by them." They still, kind of like what you said, they still idle their car, leave it on for over the five-minute period. So that kind of inspired me to try and think of an idea, or ideas, that could help us to get the, our community to not idle when they're at the schools. My idea is, first of all, contact the parents who idle their cars longer than five minutes. And again, I will go over some of these papers that I have with you that we can give to them. I feel strongly that you can't just go up as a community person and say, "You're not supposed to idle your car." You need to have some papers to show them that it is against the law, and why, why it's so very important. So that's number one. Then I thought, we need to contact our content specialists, whether in the Science Department and also on the Health. And hopefully, give them my, I would like to give them ideas and information on how to reach our students on informing their parents about this. We have film, a film on this, we have a lot of papers, and I am going to meet with, or hopefully with the principals to, and the content specialists, to talk to them about how we can do this and talk to these people. I know our children can make an impact on this. Look what they've done in regard to recycling. I don't know about your family, but I know in mine, boy, my grandchildren and my daughters, oh, you can't, and this was like, 10 years ago. They really are wonderful on it. So I feel we should be able to do this in regard to not idling our cars. The papers that I passed out to you, and in your spare time, you can look at, the first page was from Wellesley Green Schools, and it gives just a snapshot of the different items for people. And you can read the others at your leisure. But if you turn to the, second to the last page, "Thank you for not idling," and that was put on by the Wellesley Green Schools, do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
I feel this would be very good for, to give this to the people that are idling. And the, also, if you kind of turn it over, the part where it says, "Three pounds of pollution per month are generated by every vehicle dropping off and picking up their kids at one school." That's really kind of scary when you think about it. But it goes on all the details, it gives a lot of very good information. I'm going to take a trip myself to Lincoln Sudbury and also to Wellesley to look at their signs. There's some example, the last page is a sign for not idling, but I would like to kind of get some ideas to see what theirs are. I think we want to make them attractive. We don't want to have this, you know, something that people are going to ignore. And so, that is what we hope to do. Our committee, and by the way, two of my members of our committee are here tonight to support me, and we are all going to be working on different community people, and also the police, as I said, different people in our community, different churches, to see, to get the whole total support of this. Are there any questions on this?
I don't, I have, I like your idea of the health teachers. I know that there's so much in the curriculum, and, you know, I don't, I don't know what their schedule is, but I do know that every, especially the younger children in middle school, I mean, the amount of times I get, you know, warned, and, I mean, we're fairly good about sunscreen and all these different things that they've heard directly from a health teacher, that sometimes I think kids are the best reminders, when if you're sitting there absent-mindedly, you know, sometimes I think we lose track of time if you're sitting there in a car and it's on, or the heat is on, or the AC in the summer, the heat in the winter, that a reminder by a child from things that they've learned in a health class is...
This is what I feel strongly, because I've noticed just from experience how powerful our students can be. But I do think too, in our committee, we all need to make the effort, where I live in a cul-de-sac about five-minute walk from here, and all the parents come by to pick up their children because they walk through the little path, and there they are, idling. And I said, "I don't feel comfortable going up as a stranger to them saying, 'You shouldn't be idling, it's against the law.'" I'm sure they go, "Oh, this cuckoo old lady." So, I really do, I think this, the, some of this information is excellent, it's concise, and I would like to make up one for Medfield and have that in my hot little hand to show them. So I think we want to go with a positive attitude, rather than, "It's against law and you can't do this," because, number one, it's very difficult to enforce. So I think if we try the other way, like our recycling, hopefully it will work. Thank you so much.
Is this possible to put in the Thursday packet?
Sure.
I know, that's a good idea.
So every Thursday, there's, there's called the Thursday packet, instead of paper, handing out paper to the students or to the parents, the, online, parents get an email from the schools saying, "This is what's new," and people log on to the Thursday packet, and there are all these things from various organizations, and I think this would be a wonderful thing.
It's perfect for it.
Perfect. Even the health thing, they always give out something about the health, because there, I think people, I think a little bit of information and education about the, the health effects of, of idling. It's not just a convenience thing.
Exactly.
You actually waste more gas.
And it shows all this here.
Right.
And the health and the pollution, of course, but, and again, and with young children especially, who have breathing asthma, it really is, it's, as it says right here, it really is very harmful or can be. So, oh, I'm so glad you told me that, that's great. And I'll, I'll find out through the schools on that, you know, who to go through to put it in, because I think that's a...
Right.
It's perfect.
There you go. That's perfect, because I, and again, to save the paper, much better.
And Eve, if you want to contact Chief Meeting, set up a meeting, I'd be happy to sit in on that meeting as well.
Oh, good.
So we could work together on that.
Perfect, perfect, very good.
Isn't there, is there Medfield Green Moms or Medfield Green Coalition?
Medfield Green, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they'd be, they've been leafleting at the transfer station to make sure people are getting their recycling where it belongs, and holding onto the styrofoam until the one styrofoam is...
Perfect.
I'm sure that's a group that would be pleased to help with this.
Yes, yeah. Wait, I want to go through all those, but I, as I said, I kind of wanted to start at the top and work down.
But you said you started with the Selectmen.
Oh, sorry. Oh, mistake, mistake.
I, I think it's perfect timing too, at the start of school, like a little reminder about the rules, like, please do not idle your car while, you know, dropping off, picking up your students, and...
The, the most difficult thing I can see, because even to my friends, is during the winter when it's cold.
Right, right.
Because I have people say, "Oh yeah, I don't do that, but when I'm cold, I'm doing it anyway," and I just, you know, you know.
Right, right.
So I think we're going to have to really put our heads together, everybody, to try and figure out some way, a clever way, to try and hit that particular point, once it gets to be that, you know, the cold there. Again, and it tells all about how, you know, the engine's starting up and all that, and the difference, and how times have changed than when they, what it used to be with the engines and the cars. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Dr. Marsden?
Mr. Chair, could I just do the last two first, and then do the facility update last?
Sure, of course, yeah.
So the, the Madeline L. Grant Scholarship, distribution of funds, we do that with two students per year, and you voted earlier, last school year, you voted to disperse funds, and this is for John Newland. John is at University of Pennsylvania, and his transcript is included in your packet. So I ask that you approve the distribution of $3,000 to John.
Like looking at your transcript, Chris, huh?
I'd like to give him more, I was looking at it, I was like, I think we ought to give him a little bit more. Not my undergraduate. Well, congratulations to John. So the Madeline Grant Scholarship is two students for one year, is it a one-year scholarship?
It is.
And their sophomore year, right?
Right.
They get paid their sophomore year, okay. Is there a motion approved?
So moved. Or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, great job, that's impressive.
We'll get that out to him, thank you, appreciate that. The last item on that section is the tech collaborative vote, that was the agreement that was put out in the first meeting in May, I believe, in your packets, and then we tabled that. So it's another one of those, where the board that I sit on with tech, and as part of the collaborative that we belong to, is in the, the Medfield Public Schools, is they had to make a change in their, in their plan. So in order to do that, they have to have all the school committees approve that as a vote, and they send it out to the commissioner, and then the commissioner votes to approve their, their plan. So that's, they're just waiting for that vote, and then the email to me last week to make sure it was on the agenda this time, because they were waiting for it.
This was, they were adding a new, a new member school, right? Is that what?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what's the motion, just to approve?
Just to approve the amendment, the tech amendment, yes.
I move to approve the tech amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Great, thank you. Can we get that to check tomorrow, please?
So they can stop parking?
Yes.
We should apologize to the audience at home, I think our radiance burned out the, uh, the lights, so it's a little dark.
It's a little dark.
But my bald spot doesn't show as much, so it's good. I like that, we can keep that up.
Facility update, instead of going through what we normally do with a facility update, I thought we'd put it on a PowerPoint, so then I can just show you some of the, we did a lot of work this summer, and I think it's more meaningful if you actually see what some of the work is that we have done, so. So we're going to go through each school, so we, every summer, we spend a lot of time with the custodians, and they do a lot of great work, cleaning the buildings, getting prepared, cleaning the chairs, the tables, everything, prepared for the next school year. This year, we really took a, a lot of focus on some building projects that we felt needed to be done, and I'm going to go through some of those projects for you. So we'll go through, we didn't have any major projects at Memorial, so you won't see any slides of Memorial, but we did have major projects at Wheelock and the other, the other schools, so we'll start with Wheelock. So one of the things that, if you've been on the second floor of Wheelock, you notice that the color was, was faded, and it didn't really match everything. Our guys spent a lot of time this summer, and Mrs. Olson picked out some great colors, and the entire hallway on the second floor is, is kind of that Carolina Medfield blue with dark blue on top, came out great. It's a nice clean look to it, so really pleased about the work that they did. And that took a, I mean, that's, this is all in addition to the regular cleaning, so the, the guys really came through and did a nice job of that. So this is something that I know has been an issue in, in the district. So last year, we, we piloted this, this water filtration system at Dale Street, and we put it in the water fountains, or bubblers, like what the rest of us call them. And we did testing, pre and post testing, and it came clean. So there was no lead, it passed everything, we're really happy with the way that performed at Dale Street. So over the summer, we did that at Wheelock, so the bubblers can now be used at Wheelock, no more bottled water there. And then we removed a couple of bubblers that weren't working correctly, so we took them out, covered that up, and then we strategically put these around so kids can access this water whenever they want. So it's, it's outside the classrooms, it's in the cafeterias, and again, we've done the, the testing on it, it's clean, it's good to go. So real happy about that.
Jeff, can we put out, there's been a lot of email traffic around the community after the water report came out?
Right.
And I think people are conflating the issues at school, the issue with town water supply, so it'd be, it'd be great to push a lot of information about that out.
Okay.
I don't know what we were paying, I never figured out what the line item was for bottled water.
Yeah.
But it can't be long till we break even on that alone, but...
You're not kidding. I think what we're going to do is put that in the blog, my first blog that goes out in September, and, because I had actually met with some parents on it as well, that were concerned about it. So parents that were coming from Memorial to Wheelock, they had heard, you know, you can't drink the water there, et cetera, so we told them we had a plan in place, as we had done at Dale Street, and that we're going to do it at Wheelock, and, you know, so far, we've actually met with members of the Water Department Board as well, so. The other thing that we need to do at Wheelock was, one of the freezers, one of the original freezers there had ceased working, so we had a couple of issues there. We could look at taking, and you know the, the freezers are all built-in freezers, and they're walk-ins, so to, to take that out and to put a new one in, Michael, was it $40? $40,000 to do that. So we looked at doing a retrofit, which essentially left, left the structure in place, replaced all the guts of the freezer, and it's great. And it, it saved us a lot of money, and it has a whole new lease on life there. So we're real happy with the way the, the retrofit went, and now we're looking at some of the, the cooking apparatus in, in, in Wheelock that are original as well. So we're going to try to look at, at trying to get new mixers, ovens, et cetera, so we're going to look at that long-term as, as some areas to improve.
How much was the retrofit?
What was the retrofit?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two? So half price. Dale Street, if you have been in Dale Street in, last spring, you noticed that we had a black residue coming down, and this, this was all wood, if you remember, it was all old wood. So we had that refaced with this, with this material, and then roofers went in on the top, and they actually were there today until it rained, and they'll be there again for the rest of the week to fix that as well. So we don't want to put a lot of money in Dale Street, as you know, because we want to make sure that our plan long-term is to build a new elementary school, but we, we can't have that facade on the outside the way it was, and then all the, the material coming down. So we, we took care of that this summer, and that'll be ready for, for kids in a couple weeks, so we're happy, happy about that as well.
That's great, that was really disgusting.
It was.
Because it was dripping on people.
It was, it was.
Pretty.
So one of the things that we looked at, you know, Michael and I, we, we both came from other districts where, when the gym floors are refinished, our own guys did that. So we had the company that does gym floors, or that sells us the product, come in, train our guys, and then they would take care of that, and they would do it. So there was a practice here where an outside company came in, so that was costing us $8,000 per gym floor to do. So Michael organized the training this year, and our guys did a great job on these floors. So this is the, the redone Dale Street floor. So they did the high school, the middle school, and Dale Street floor, our own guys in-house. So they had, just had to pay for the, the product, the poly, and, you know, they just did a great job with it. So real proud of the work they did, certainly were able to do that, and, and they came through for it. So that's, you know, that gives the flexibility that if it's mid-season, it's been, it's been used by all the youth groups, and it's really in bad shape, if we have a week, or vacation week where it's not being used, our guys can take care of it and put a whole new top on it, so real happy with that. The new teachers' parking lot at Dale Street, so if you've driven by that, you know, that's really going to be an asset. You remember, our teachers were, were parking in mud and, and stonedust for, for many, many years, so this is going to be great, and this is a, a nice byproduct of the, the Public Safety Building. This was part of that project. I'd have to say that the company that, we attended those meetings on Wednesdays, and the company that did this GNR were fantastic. I mean, I've done other building projects in schools where they just do what they want, and they're not really receptive to ideas of the school department. These guys were great, they did a really nice job. Just a few punchless items left, they need, they, the pole came down on Friday, there was some ever-source poles here, and you can see the other one right there. Those both came down on Friday, and now we just need to do, do some work behind here, there's some stonedust paths that they need to figure out and do, and they have to plant the grass as well. But it's been used for the kids all, as soon as it was opened up, the kids from the FAF Center have been using it in the playground, and it worked out pretty well. We had, we had a great conversation on the design of what that stonedust path would look like. It's interesting with people that don't work in schools, their concept of what it should look like, and then you bring the school people in, like, well, we want a, a clear line of sight. We want a clear line of sight from point A to point B, because they want it to meander through the woods to aesthetically look better, but we want it to, we want it for kids and safety, so we, we worked that out, and it came out great, and we're real happy about that. We just need to add some lights now on the, this side of Dale Street, so that's a project that we're going to be working on next couple of weeks, I think? Yeah, so we're going to get that done next couple of weeks. But that came out great, and we're 59 spots, so enough for all of our teachers. We're real happy with that. So this is the Blake Middle School, and I think I, I mentioned to you in email over the summer, some of the work that's been done there. So if you have been there lately, or before this, you, you knew it was, it was pretty tired, especially, there was areas up here that were falling down. There was no paint left on the floors in, in between the seats, so we've had it all repainted, the new drop ceiling put in, all new lighting, it's so bright in there now, it's great. All new lighting, all energy-efficient lighting in there, it, it really looks good. I don't know if, does next picture have the, all right, so next picture has this view. So again, our guys have done the floors, so then they redid the whole stage floor as well. So they went through, sanded the whole stage floor, and then painted it the black, it came out great. Really, really nice. So that was a room that we felt needed a little TLC, and, and it really came out nice. The only thing that's left there, probably are the seat cushions. The seat cushions are still the older ones, but it's just a really nice presentation now when you're walking in, so we're pleased about the way that came out. We've, we've had classrooms at Blake, if you've been in there, that have the square tile, excuse me, the square carpet, carpet squares, and they, they're, they're pretty old. So we're starting to, to look at those and replace them. This was Classroom 210, it really needed a lot of work, it had some water damage in it, so we ripped up all the carpet and replaced it with tile that we had in stock. So that, that came out great. Again, a really, really good job, a nice, neat, clean look, so we're going to try to work toward each year, getting some of those classrooms that are at Blake that have the old carpet squares into tile.
Yeah, so just, those, so we need to just talk about that?
Sure.
Because those carpet tiles were done for a reason that I can kind of go over.
Acoustically?
No, it was because, and maybe you fixed, there's an underground aquifer, a river basically that runs under there, and it causes moisture to come through.
Yeah.
And it was causing the glue to seep.
Oh, interesting.
Through the tiles, and especially today's kinds of adhesives, which are not, they're environmentally friendly, so.
We'll have to take, we'll have to look at 210 and then make sure that...
See how this one works.
Right, exactly, we'll see how that works, and then we'll, we'll take a look at it. But they are, even with the extraction machines, I mean, they're, I mean, I think when you put carpet in years ago, kids weren't having snacks and drinks, and those kids...
Oh yeah, no, it's a mess.
It is, it is, it's really...
Yeah, we did, we did, in the building projects, we actually put down a new water, you can put down a surface applied waterproof.
Right.
Waterproof is fairly expensive, but we did that actually in this building, in the existing...
So what year were those carpets in? Was that...
Well, that was even before that, probably, that was down in the 90s, that, those carpet tiles.
Okay, okay. We'll have to keep an eye on 210 then, thank you. So you know that this room, the 206, is where Nat wants to do his makerspace with the 3D printer and all that, so we're, we're presently working on that, but if you've ever been in that room prior to this, it was very dark, you could barely see in the room, we replaced all the lighting in there. The lighting was already there, but it just needed to be updated. It really came out great, so that, I can't wait till this room is up and, and moving with kids, because it is going to be a great place for them to work and, and create, and it is really going to be something. So you'll be more, you'll be hearing more of this, I'm sure, you know, once it's open and the kids are using it, I'm sure Nat will love to come in and tell you about it, but this is really going to be a great space, but it, it looks totally different now, you know, with the lighting upgrades. So this was, this was capital for two years ago? Last summer. So this was capital last summer that, that did not get done until this summer. Um, this was, um, this was part of the, the issue we're having with electricity at, at Blake. Um, so this UPS tower was put in there. I don't know a lot about that one, I have to be honest with you.
Well, it helps.
I know, I know it, it helps us out.
It helps with power surges.
Right, power surges, exactly. So there's the middle school floor came out great. Again, our guys did that. This is a great story. So I guess they've always had an issue with the sound system in the middle school gym. So Nat loves to have all the, the, the activities in there and the gatherings and the sound system just wasn't really working well. So we had some work done, um, this summer with someone that's synchronizing all the clocks. So we've had this issue where there's four different time zones in the middle school and the high school. So if you're sharing staff or kids that go back and forth, it just never worked out right. So we had someone correct those time zones and this was the old system in the high school. We brought it over to the middle school and he set it up at the middle school with the overhead speakers and it works great. So now they have the sound system in there for their dances, for everything that they'd never had before. And, uh, it just wasn't, we weren't even using this particular piece of, of equipment. So it worked out great. Cafeteria landing at the high school. So if you've ever been, you may not have even noticed this, but this was all old carpet. It was getting really dirty. Kids were throwing all their stuff on it or whatever. It was lost and found lots of times. So our guys took all the carpet off, um, restained this and then re-tiled that. It looks great. So just a, a nice little addition to the high school cafeteria. And there's a refinished gym floor. The high school. If you've ever come into a basketball game, you walk into that main area and you walk up the stairs. So it's a very public place. So visiting teams, lots of folks come through there. Uh, there were three or four different kinds of paint and it was all peeling. So our guys did a really good job and repainted all that again, trying to keep it consistent with, with the, the dark blue. It looks really nice when you come in. So this was something that, uh, was a pet peeve that we had over the winter. So our, our, um, youth groups use this, this doorway in the, all winter for basketball on Sundays. Alright, it looks a little bit wider than it actually is. My, my phone must have taken it a little bit wider. So what used to happen was this was just all grass and everyone used that. So they would try to, they would snow blow an area, but then it would turn to mud. And then all that mud would come into the school and on the gym floor, it was a disaster. So, uh, we worked with the DPW, they were great. They came and they, they took a Bobcat, took all this out and then repaved it for us. So now that's something that we can plow and it won't be an issue, you know, going forward. At least we'll keep it a little bit cleaner inside the building and it won't have that abrasiveness on our gym floor. Another area they helped us with. So this was an area where, um, all the athletes, where they come off the fields, they always come into this door here. Uh, and this was just all mud and, and dirt. Uh, so we had them pave that and then they put a path in going right to the sidewalk where everyone comes down. And then we're going to put two benches here so that the kids can sit and take their cleats off before they go into the building. You know, cause that's, that's always an issue too. They always take their cleats off before they go in, but they're all on the floor, I mean, on the ground. So put a couple of benches there and that will work out. And again, try to keep that area a little bit cleaner. So it's not just, um, tracking the mud and dirt and all. But again, the DPW was fantastic with us and it was probably like ninety-five degrees a day they were doing this. And I went out and talked to them and they jokingly said, you could have picked a cooler day for us to have this done. So.
Those are well-trained high school kids to take their cleats off before they go inside.
They do.
Like, my gosh, you might need to come to my house.
Something, and, and Michael and I have talked about this and, and Sam lived it. Um, if you really want to see something, you have to see the end of lunch in high school. It is amazing. It is two claps, okay, lunch is over. Everybody gets up, they throw their stuff away and they're gone. It is amazing. It is, I mean, I've been in a lot of high school cafeterias. It doesn't usually go that way, but it is, it's really neat. So this is something that we've talked about for a year or so, uh, putting in the cameras, the security system. So we have fourteen cameras installed at the high school right now. Uh, these are the ones at the entrances right now, but we also have them on the parking lots. We have them, we have an actual, um, on a pole, four cameras together doing a three sixty view of the field and the parking lot. And then we have every area around the high school, the perimeter, um, that's covered right now. So, um, as a part of this, we also upgraded the, the, the system for letting folks in, you know, um, in the high school and all five schools. So that it's no longer looking up at a TV screen for a secretary. It pops right up on their computer. So they'll be able to do their work, look to see who's at the door and hit the buzzer or not, hit the buzzer. So we, you know, that was some new technology that we thought was pretty important. But this, these cameras, you know, we've, we've, you've heard the, the issues we've had the last few years. I mean, nothing major, but, you know, things that, you know, we, we need to make sure that we can, we can address. And we can't do that unless we have camera coverage. So, um, those are going to be up and running by the end of next week. Um, and they'll be storing all the data on a server for about thirty days and then wiping them out. Uh, which, you know, industry standard, I know Tim, I, I think thirty days is pretty appropriate. Most schools are doing thirty days. Any more than that, we have to buy additional servers and to keep all the data. But, um, you know, that's, this is just a, a drop in the bucket for this, this kind of stuff. So I think we're, we're, made a good dent in it this summer and the town is supporting us through capital on this, which is great. So, uh, we'll be continuing to add on to the security system. So just, just some information on all schools. So we'll have card access to all the staff, for all the staff starting, all, all, all five schools starting next week. So every staff member will have an ID with a swipe card and that's how they'll get into the building. And it'll be programmed so that every staff member, let's say, just will be able to get in the building from six-thirty to five o'clock. And if it's before that time, they can't get in or if after that time, they can't get in. But if it's during that time, they swipe their card and they just go in. This is really important. I think the last couple of years, we've had a lot of, at least I've had a lot of requests, elementary teachers especially, that want to, number one, work after hours. If they have children they have to pick up, they go home, get their kids and come back to work. And sometimes that's problematic with keys and that type of thing. They also have a lot of requests to work on weekends. So this will allow us, um, and we're, we're working on this right now, if someone wanted to work in their classroom from ten to four, that they could go in, swipe their card. You know, we'll have one set alarms, codes will know who, who it is. And then they'll go in, do that and then, and they can leave. So it, it gives our teachers access, but also security so that we're not propping doors or doing all of that kind of thing. So we're pretty happy about that. The goal was to get just the middle and high school done this summer. Uh, but we, we got some really good deals on that with the company and they, they put all, put it in all five buildings. So it worked out great. So we're going to reduce our capital, um, requests from the town because they did a three-year request and we're able to do it all in one year. So we'll be able to reduce that capital request in the town. And, and then the new door, screen, monitor systems, again, on, on the computer, which is great. So I just, I just want to publicly thank Michael, um, Owen, Alan, the maintenance and consensual staff for all the work they did over the summer. I mean, we're, they're still plugging away, but just an amazing amount of work in a short period of time. And of course, the guys, the highway division, DPW, uh, ninety-five degrees, they're out there doing that for us. They also did a, a little section up by the, by the football, soccer, all-purpose field. As you go down the hill, it was all worn down and they, they put some blacktop there, which is great, uh, just to make it a little safer for us. That's, it was a, you know, very productive summer and a lot of good work done.
Yeah, it looks great.
Have any questions or?
I think people think, I think, I know that you guys, Michael and, and Owen and Alan work during the summers like some of your busiest time.
Right, exactly.
Like the schools, nobody's around and all that.
Right.
But a lot of, that's kind of the busiest time for.
All that preparation for September. You know, if you don't do all the preparation work before September, September doesn't go off as well as you'd like. So. So again, I thought it'd be better than just showing a piece of paper.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That concludes new business. Onto old business, Mr. Austin.
Uh, we have no old business, but we can go to superintendent's report, Mr. Chair. So elementary program update, we've, we've had a, a group of teachers, starting from the day after the kids left. And they have been working on research and development projects, I think, three or four days now, um, over the summer. And working with a consultant, preparing for the implementation of the MAP program. Really excited about that. Uh, we have a, a few hour training right before school starts for all teachers, but we've, excuse me, we focus on these teacher leaders who have really shown an interest in mathematics and have volunteered their time to do some of this work. They're the ones that are getting a lot of the, making a lot of decision-making in terms of the rollout. And, and then we'll do the full training of, of, of all of our staff right before school. And then we'll do another training in October. It's going to be ongoing. Uh, it's, it's a big undertaking. It's not something that, it's very different, uh, than what folks are used to. And it's going to take a lot of hard work, but I know that our teachers are up to it. They've been wanting to do this for a while. So we're pretty pleased, pretty pleased with that. We've got a lot of supplies. It was one day, uh, that eight pallets of supplies came in, uh, over and we put it all at the Dale Street to kind of distribute it from there. And, um, stuff is still trickling in. We got, I think, eleven boxes central office yesterday. And it's a lot of manipatives and things that kids need, but it, they got the major parts with the books and the teacher kits first. And now the, some of the student stuff is coming in. So we're excited about it. You know, Pearson's an interesting company because they are so huge now. And, you know, we think of Medfield as the most important place in the world, but sometimes we're not. So. It's been challenging in the summer, just making sure that everything gets done on time. And I know Kim Cave and, and I've done a lot of phone calls there. So. We're happy about it. So we'll, we'll be able to do a, you know, report to you once we start the implementation. Certainly those of you that have children in elementary, we'll, we'll see it firsthand.
Great, great.
Uh, the boiler update, uh, I sent you an email a couple of weeks ago to let you know that our bids did come in over budget. So our OPM, our project manager, uh, suggested to us that we look at the project, scale it down a bit and rebid in January so that we start this process. So we'll be finishing it up right now, next year. So the end of August. Um, I consulted with Tim on that. Um, he, he concur that that probably a better plan than, than trying to, you know, go to a project that has eight percent overage. There's a part of both of us, I think, that thought we, we have money built in a contingency. Let's go for it and see what happens. Uh, but I think our OPM, uh, thought that it would be better to go up to, to bid and kind of restructure the project. So instead of having two, having a twin boiler and then a third boiler to, to help us out if, if one is down. Um, they're suggesting in the new one to have two larger boilers so that they could, um, they could work on and off each other. And, and Tim, you know this too, but I, interesting how much you learn about this, that the boilers, they don't just run full, full steam anymore. They're twenty percent, forty percent, and they kind of play off each other a little bit for efficiency. So. Um, I think that's, we're waiting for MSBA to give us, um, their approval on that. We submitted the documentation. A few weeks ago, I had to write a letter requesting an extension because the, the original documents we sent in, everything had to be completed by June of two thousand sixteen. So they're going to give us an extension, hopefully, on that. And then we'll be, uh, putting out to bid in, in January. But it's, um, as Alan said to me the other day, I, I guess I have to plan to use the current boilers for this winter. I said, we got a plan for it. So we had to get a couple of repairs we need to do. I'm sorry?
Is there, God forbid, something happens? Is there a generator or something to?
Cutting down wood in the back.
I was going to say, what, what are we talking? Are you and a man out there?
Have you seen the day after tomorrow?
I think, you know, so what we would do is we have a couple of repairs that are going to be made before the heating season, which we typically do October fifteenth. And then if something were to happen, we could bring in, um, a boiler on a, on an eighteen wheeler and put it outside and run it off that. So if we had to do that. The only thing is if it happens this winter, it's on our dime versus if it happened.
Right.
During the project, it was on the company's dime.
So how, how much older than its natural kind of life expectancy is our boiler? Like, are we on thin ice?
We are. It's, it's forty-two or forty-three years old right now. And there's been lots of repairs on it. So it's not that it's, it's all original. Uh, but it's, it's not running as efficient as it should and, and certainly we'll save some money on that end as well.
And so there's one boiler?
Two.
There are two that kind of work off of one another now.
As big as this room. Just about.
And so if, if one goes, then?
You could run the other one.
You could run the other one. Okay, okay. So it's probably less likely that both would go at the same time for that.
I agree. I'm not going to stop there. So they just cycle through, like one go, one runs and the other one cycles through and they just keep going back and forth.
And if something does happen, it means the heating system is, is gone.
Yeah.
Well, the boiler part, there's univents in each classroom that has, that, that points of heat in each classroom too. So we would have to, um, we'd have to have a new boiler brought in so those univents work correctly.
Okay.
I mean, it, it, I don't know the condition of these, but they, they can keep boilers going a long time. You just spend a lot more in maintenance.
Right.
They're milling the parts.
Fix them and they patch them up.
Okay.
Right.
But would that be less than that eight percent override? You see what I mean?
Well, it's, this is the issue because the, this is, the MSBA is contributing, I don't know how much. So that, that, that doesn't even count to the, yeah, and I don't think it would come to that eight percent, obviously. But I think, I, I think that the way this was, we really couldn't enter into a contract with no contingency or, in fact, I don't even.
Very little.
Had enough.
Right.
Even with the contingency. So there was like no choice really to some extent.
Right. And then, and the town allocated the money at town meeting. So then.
We'd have to go back to town.
Right, you have to go back to that to, you know, to get additional money. Because we thought, well, could we just, is there a way we could use facility, um, money that we have in revolving account to offset that? And they wouldn't allow us to do that because it's, it's the town and the school together going to this. And the town voted the, the money at town meeting not to exceed a certain amount.
Oh, wow. So I was like, why can't we just throw in a little extra and get it over the hump? But.
The budget for the project came from MSBA's projections, right?
Correct. We, we don't, yeah, they, they hire their own engineer. They provide all that. We, we didn't do any of the projections.
With all their experience with boiler, I mean, they're doing boiler projects all over.
You know, the, the construction market is very inflationary right now, for one thing. So.
So is everybody encountering this? I mean.
Yeah, well, we've seen on our projects that HVAC bids are coming in over our budgets, what, what the estimators are telling us, you know, two months before.
So that must be good then to wait, you know, there's only so long that they can do that.
Yeah. Well, they also, they've reduced the number of boilers. So I think they've taken out scope of the project a little.
So that's less piping out of the, you know, out of the room and that type of thing. So that will reduce the scope of it.
But the scope is still something MSBA approves? They don't, they?
Well, they would, they would have to approve it. Um, that's what Jeff's doing now. It provides a little less flexibility. The reason why they have three boilers is that gives you that sort of, you can maintain one and take one, two, two are still there and, you know. So there's a little less flexibility, but these are all sized, I think, I don't know what they're sized to, but they're probably close to the full size of.
Right.
Like, one could operate.
One could operate everything.
A large amount of school.
That's correct.
I think it's, makes sense. Really not much choice anyways.
Right.
So do we need to vote to, to approve the revise, revision?
We may need to once they approve it. So they need to give us a letter back saying that we can extend it and go back out in January.
Alright.
So that may need another vote for you folks once we get to that point. But we're still waiting for them. Uh, Dale Street parking lot, I think that, you know, that was part of that project. I don't know if anyone has any other, any other questions on that. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the district initiative for two thousand fifteen. Maybe spend a little time on that. Um, that was in, included in your packet. So it's, it's really a list of, of goals and, and things that we're going to focus on for the, for the school year. And some of these are in year two and some of them are in year one and some of them may carry on a couple of years. Uh, but I think it's important just to, to get a sense of some of the things that we're thinking about administratively. And then certainly any input that you have or additions and we'll, we'll look at that as well. So first, we're looking at the pre-K through twelve strategic plan. So I, over the summer, I have, um, met with some vendors and had some conversations with them. Uh, I've asked for proposals from a few vendors and then I'll bring them to you. So hopefully I'll have them by the September meeting. Uh, most of the vendors are talking about a six-month project on this. So, um, they were very pleased that we had the data from Panorama and entry plan because that takes that particular piece out of it. That takes the whole survey piece out of it. But they want to do the focus groups, which I think are really important. So they would do focus groups, uh, but any vendor that we'll do, we'll have, that we choose will have focus groups of community members, parents, uh, town officials. Any stakeholder that we think is important for us. Uh, and they'll do those focus groups and they could be Saturday morning, Thursday night, whatever. We choose, you know, how that works. So that was really good. Um, they, they're talking about limiting, and I, and I, I think this is important too. Limiting the overarching goals to, to five or six. And then making sure that, for instance, it could be something like, uh, increasing student achievement by ten percent. I'm just, you know, throwing that out there. That would be one goal. Then there'd be sub-goals and action items underneath that. And then responsibilities, those kinds of things. So I think that most of the plans are similar and I was very clear that I'm not looking, uh, as a, as a superintendent for a, a seventy-page document that no one's ever going to look at. I want a living, breathing document that we can review at this meeting every year and kind of give an update. I can give you an update on where we are. And we can do that midway through the year and at the end of the year and just plan if things change and we add additional or take something. I want to make sure that we could do that. And, and that's the way it's going. It's not going where you have the, the seventy-five pages and, and a checkoff list and no one looks at it because we, we don't, we have no interest in that. So I think the vendors I've talked to, they understand that and they know that education is really trying to focus more on, on big picture items instead of trying to do, you know, fifty-five random acts of improvement all over the place. You know, they're not looking for that anymore. So that was positive. So I thought that we have the subcommittee in place for strategic planning. Once I get those proposals that we sit down, take a look at them and then decide, do we want to have those folks come to school committee and, and we interview them that way? Or do we want the subcommittee? Or we can, we can decide that after. But just want to throw that out there to see where, where you are. Um, it's a lot of familiar faces that are doing this. It's the NesDex and the Futures and those companies that are, that are doing this kind of work. So, um, I think, you know, you, you certainly will be able to see all the, uh, what they, what they give us in examples. I looked at some examples. I, I asked each one to show me a website of an example that they've done recently. So I got a sense of what they were producing and how it was working. I'll probably reach out to districts and superintendents, uh, if, once we get close to a decision and get a sense of how the process went. So we, we make sure that we're doing, choosing someone that's going to do a really good process.
And you, you don't have any bids or proposals from them yet?
No, no. No, I think that, you know, what they're, what I've heard, and it's nothing but, nothing official. What I've heard is that it's looking like a range between, you know, thirteen to seventeen or thirteen to eighteen thousand for the whole project. And, but we really get to design the scope of that project, which is the exciting part. We get to tell them, you know, how we want it to look and what best works for Medfield. So we'll, um, I'll give you an update on that, but that's where we are right now. And I should have something by the September meeting.
Um, just so I can wrap my head around it. So this is, um, very much like, and maybe Chris can answer this better. Kind of what we did for the superintendent search. Like, it's such a, you actually have a, a vendor that helps you navigate through what the entire district sees as goals.
Tim's been through this before. He's probably better equipped. Were you on when we did last strategic plan?
No, not here. I mean, I've done the, you know, business.
It is essentially, I mean, they do a lot of what we did for the superintendent's search. Yeah. And they organize community meetings and then, I mean, we got a lot of great feedback from that process.
Oh, yeah. So they'll use some of that, whatever vendor we have.
Right.
Yeah, we're, I think, three years behind at least on a strategic plan here. I think when, when Bob's last year was here, was supposed to be the.
We were talking about it then, right.
That, you know.
Yeah, the last one was done before I was on the committee in terms of a big community engagement.
Well, I remember talking about it and Bob saying that it shouldn't be done because there was a new.
Well, maybe it was done when I was thirteen years old. Oh, that could be. It was before me.
Okay.
So that's where we are with that. And, um, you know, we'll keep you updated and certainly.
Remind me who's on the strategic plan subcommittee?
Anna May and I.
Tim and Anna May.
Okay.
It would be good to, it would be good to, um, with the PIN nights, that, that that become part of the agenda, that it's happening and that people should think about looking for, um, you know, looking for notices of when there are going to be opportunities to communicate.
And surveys, I know there's, it's always difficult. And surveys, I know there's, it's always difficult to get people to do the surveys. Sometimes those little reminders too are always good, but.
Thankfully, yeah.
That's great. Thanks, Tim. The elementary school day, we've, we've been working on this, it'll be the second year. So we've looked at, and I'm not going to go through what we've done because you, you folks have heard it before, but I think this year we're looking at whether or not it's, it's feasible to add, say, thirty minutes to the elementary school day. And, and what does that look like? What is that, what are those thirty minutes used for? And, and getting everyone on board with that. And also, I think a component in the second half of this year would be to look at the Wheelock start and how that factors into, you know, the overall busing schedule and whether or not. I, I've heard a lot from parents that it's gone beyond an inconvenience, it's now becoming an economic issue.
Yeah.
Because folks can't get to work. And if they want to go to work, they need to do daycare. So it's really something that I think we should look at and strongly consider. And I think, you know, I think I've said it before that we, we can certainly accomplish that. So that committee is intact. Our first meeting is in October and we're going to start looking first at the day itself and the structure, but then looking at the times and the start times of the schools as well.
Is that going to tie into the high school start times too?
So that, that's, so there's a, a teacher who's currently, uh, doing an internship for principal licensure. And we met last week and that's one of the things I suggested that she do is, is to work with the administration of the high school and get a group together, start looking at that. I think we're not as early as some places, you know, seven forty is not bad for a high school. It's still early, but it's not bad for a high school. There are high schools that start at seven oh five, seven ten. But there are also high schools in the area that are starting at eight. So we need, we need to take a look at.
Isn't that the whole thing? That like, high schoolers should be starting a little bit later and that you don't have like these little kids at Wheelock starting at like lunchtime practically? Like, yeah, they've been up since like early in the morning because they've gone to bed at seven o'clock. And then you have high schoolers who stay up all night studying and they're, you know, they're still sleeping and you're dragging them out of bed, like.
Right. So once we get some information from that, that group will incorporate that as well.
I mean, there was a lot in the summer, this summer, there was something I remember seeing in the news, the CDC recommends eight thirty.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the debt push is the end of the day back so far and it impacts everything else at the back end.
Right.
You know, jobs and sports and activities, yeah.
But I think in a, in a district of five schools where every kid goes through each school.
Yeah.
We could do it. You know, it's, it's still difficult to, to do in terms of the busing and the parents and all that. But I think if, if it can be done, it can be done in a, in a situation like this, so we should really take a good look at that. Uh, the Invision two point O, I think we've talked about that implementation. That's going to be ongoing and there, there will be bumps in the road, but I think, you know, folks are up to that. Expansion refinement of the one-to-one. So that's something that, again, where we expanded this past year to all the middle school students. We're, we're doing a little bit more at Dale Street with that, but also with the Chromebooks for the seniors this year. So this will be the first time the entire high school is, is looking at one-to-one. But also we need to keep refining and looking at that. Because I think that, you know, one of the things that, that I'm hearing and that I'm seeing is that there's an expectation now, after having three years of, of an iPad at the middle school. There's an expectation that when you get to the high school that it'll be a similar or extended experience. So we need to look at that and make sure that's happening. Because I think, um, I talked to a parent over the summer that, that mentioned on college trips this past, uh, spring, that what struck her was that she's visiting all these places. And they don't have the technology even close to what we're doing.
Right.
In Medfield. And their, their concern is that, so am I, are we spending so much time in K to twelve working on technology and then it's going to be obsolete when they get to college anyway? So that was a concern that, and we, we talked through a little bit, but I think it's, you know, it's, it's a valid point. I mean, you go to, I mean, when I, when I taught at B C, there was, you know, chalkboards and chalk and that's it. There wasn't any technology at all in those classrooms. So I think it's something to, something to consider, but I don't think that should hold us back from the work that we're doing.
Right.
You know.
No, I will say that the one, the, the tweet that I heard the most about over the summer that didn't relate to Deflate Gate was Nat's tweet in late June, early July. And it was, he was linking to, I think it was a Wall Street Journal or New York Times article that's saying, you know, do kids have too much screen time? And I had so many, uh, people forward that to me saying, asking if that, if that was intend, meant to be ironic.
Yeah.
And I do, I mean, I share that concern. I mean, with, you know, kids now, they're, you know, they're, they're on the screens at school, like, they, there are a lot of their homework is on the screens, they're with the Google Docs and everything else. And I, I get all the reasons it's great and wonderful and helping us move forward, but I do think there's a point, there, there, there's a tipping point, I think we're reaching with some of them. And I know we talked last year and we talked even with the teachers, um, at some point about, you know, what we're doing to really control this. Because there are a lot of kids, there's a lot of apps that are still on there because the kids own the iPads.
Correct.
We can't control. We can't get Snapchat off there, we can't get texting off there, we can't, you know, lock down the cameras and things like that. And I, you know, I think we're still encountering a lot of those kind of problems, so.
I would agree. And I, I, you know, Nat does care about that and he's, he's really in tune to the screen time piece. He really is. You know, and he talks about that with the staff a lot. You know, where it, it doesn't have to always be on, on, on the iPad, you know. So I think that he's, he's aware of that and it is a little ironic when he sends something like that off.
I mean, it's not, he, he's not in the classroom teaching, but I'm, you know.
Right. So the digital citizenship piece as part of that, you know, that's, really want to start that at a younger grade so that kids understand, you know, what it means to, to be a digital citizen in terms of their footprint and the work that they do online and, and what's good behavior with, with an iPad and what's not. So we need to start that a little bit earlier. And we've, we've met with, with the technology team on this. And we want to really infuse that into the elementary schools. And we're thinking that, um, library time is a good time to start doing lessons on that, uh, when kids are in the library and, and start learning the appropriate usage of that. Because, you know, they come in knowing how to use technology and we want to make sure that they fully understand the implications of that. You know, what that, what that really means. So we're working on that K to twelve. That's something that we're, it's, it's ongoing. It's very much ongoing. Uh, world language study group, um, that's really geared toward elementary, uh, world language and just taking a look at, uh, different ways that we could do options for parents where they could get a sense of what language, maybe try out a language for eight weeks before they, they choose for the next three years. We did do a provision this year where we asked, we, we allowed parents after year one opt out if they wanted to, uh, to go to a different language. And that was a one-time thing at, at Wheelock. But also looking at the potential of, of doing a, a year at Wheelock where you do eight weeks of Mandarin, eight weeks of Spanish and eight weeks of French. And then have that going through. You know, I think that's something. But I think we really need to talk about the implications of it in elementary school and what the implementation did scheduling-wise. And then, you know, try to map it out so that it works really well for families and kids. And it's really just a, a conversation as, okay, we have that, let's evaluate what we did and let's see if we can improve it and maybe give kids even more opportunities with French. So that's, that's kind of what we're, we're going to work on.
Was that used to be the model, you had six months of?
No, it was half Spanish, half.
Half Spanish and half French before we added Mandarin.
Yeah, French and Spanish.
But that was at middle school.
That was in middle.
Yes, sixth grade, yeah.
Because, and when they started the languages, Aaron was, um, in the elementary and it was, half the year was, um, Spanish and half the year was Mandarin. There was no option for French.
So, I mean, that certainly has budget implications.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you worry about the, you know, whether it just becomes a, the most charismatic teacher gets the most, uh, students taking that language.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. So we, we want to make sure that at least there's exposure. Because if you look at the literature on elementary language programs, there, there is, so literature on the upper grades is that exposure piece doesn't really work. But the literature on the elementary grades says it does work. And it's also, it's a best practice. So we need to take a look at that and, and see how that can work for Medfield. And it, it may not work schedule-wise or, but we just need to evaluate what we've done so far and just see if we can do it, do it better for our kids.
So is it, the elementary research, is it exposure to any language at an early age? Or, so it doesn't matter if they're taking Mandarin, French, man, it doesn't matter?
Any language.
Just take a, take a language and if you switch it up every eight weeks, it doesn't matter, just expose them to language.
Well, just for that one year to make a choice.
Oh, okay.
So it wouldn't be to, to, to do it, you know, multiple times. But it, it's really to give kids a sense of.
A taste.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and see what, and also parents.
Right.
And also parents too.
Yeah.
That is good. I mean, there are always going to be issues, you know.
Always, yeah.
Get all charismatic teachers.
But it goes back to.
It's not that easy.
Right. It goes back to the school day.
Right.
As well as the structure of that. I mean, they're all tied together.
No, I know.
It's not meaningful learning.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
So we have field projects, uh, that is a, a district initiative and a goal for us. Michael and I spent some time in July, uh, interviewing different landscape architects to do a field study for us. We had seven, um, companies apply for that and we interviewed, ended up interviewing three and came to one. And we're still working out the, the details on that. But we're looking at, uh, a field study that would take plays, again, more focus groups in the community with user groups and those kinds of things. But just to get a sense of what the community is looking for in addition to a high school field. So if you were looking at doing something at MeteCom or something behind Wheelock or, um, or a practice field of a high school, beyond just the addition, the resurfacing of the high school field and get youth groups, everyone involved in that. So it becomes a community initiative, not just the school. So we're, we're, we're a few weeks away from starting that with a company and then that should be done around Thanksgiving. And that will give us, you as a committee, uh, almost a menu of what options we might, might be looking at and then the costs associated with those options.
So did we already budget for, um, you know, this type of company to come in and visit?
Yeah, so that was, that was capital.
So what was the, what was the cap? I can't remember.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, okay.
And right now it's below that. What we're negotiating.
Okay.
Forty-two, forty-three thousand.
Okay.
Is the goal to have?
Just hope I watch the video.
Is the goal to have the field done next summer?
The goal would be to have it approved at town meeting next year and, and then start right at the day after graduation.
And so would it be done, would it be done? It wouldn't be done for fall sports?
It would be.
It would be.
It would be. It's quick.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. It's a quick turn. And that's, you know, one of the things that they're going to take some borings around the field because when you walk around the field, you, you have some repression. So there is a little concern that the base layer might have some issues.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things. We were on there, actually Robert and I were on there today and there's even some of the places they restitched for us last year are starting to come up. They're coming at the end, they coming this week, Michael?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. They're coming and they're going to do some more, um, some more work there. So that's, it's safe for our kids, but it's, it's tired.
Yeah.
It's tired. It's got a lot of use. And that's the thing, it's not like it's a field that only gets used from high school sports in the fall. I mean, it is non-stop that feels. You know, so.
Um, could you also, because I've gotten calls and requests and, um, from, you know, sports parents and, and just people in general that, that do use the field, um, something about that that's coming down the pike? That, you know, to be on the lookout, again, like, people are going to have to be aware of these surveys coming that, don't whine and complain about the turf when you can be part of the process and answer a survey about, you know, what you'd like, what the town should do, you know, get on board with that.
Good.
It might be, in addition to your blog.
Saying it in a nice way.
Get the youth, youth, um, sports programs to push that out too.
Right, so we, so we met with them.
Yeah.
We met with all the youth people and they're absolutely going to help us with that. They want to push it up.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they were in that initial phase of, of, of a meeting and then they basically said, you, whatever you need us to do, we'll help you out. They are very excited about the prospect of getting moved.
Oh, yeah. That is good.
In fact, they want us to do it last town meeting. Just put it through.
We don't know what it is yet.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Just put it through.
So that, you know, that's going to be something that we're, we're going to be looking for. And again, in, in getting the community involved in that process is going to be important. And that's going to be part of the scope of the field studies involving the community and getting a sense of what they're looking for. Boiler project, we've gone through, um, ed evaluation standards three and four, so we're, we're looking at that. Remember, the implementation, um, last year was, the year before last, excuse me, was standards one and two, and now we're doing standards three and four. And we got permission from the department to do that because most places we're doing all one, two, three and four. So this is really the community engagement piece, those kinds of things that are important for teaching, but not the meat and, meat and potatoes of instruction and learning like the first two standards are. So we'll be training teachers on the first couple of days with that. We'll also be working with the evaluators like we did last year, getting everyone in the same room, working with consultant on evaluation, doing the walkthrough evaluations in the buildings. So we're looking forward to that as well. Um, and that's, you know, it's just really important, but certainly takes a lot of time. No doubt about it. SOI for Dale Street, right now we're, we're looking at doing a statement of interest for Dale Street, MSBA for a new Dale Street building. In my discussions over the summer with superintendents and folks at MSBA, this really, I was talking to the Welzy superintendent, he can't even get on the list for a new school. It's, it's really difficult and Tim, I'm sure you know, it's, it's difficult to get on the list. They're looking at the overcrowding and the safety issues and they, they have a list of schools there and, um, they're working their way down. So we'll be putting that together and, and hopefully we'll get some traction with an SOI with something, uh, for a new building. But I think the time is right for the, for the town at least in terms of finishing up one project and getting to another. But we'll see where we, where we go with that. It was, was it three years ago or four years ago for the SOI? Last time?
Three years.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, we'll do that. And then the, the last piece that we're looking at is, is really looking at that Metro West health data. So we get, we do the surveys every other year for our six through twelve students. We just got the data back and, um, there's a lot of stuff there that we need to look at with student stress and, you know, substance abuse and those kinds of things. So really focus on that whole social, emotional piece and, and look at what we can do. So administratively, we're actually meeting on this tomorrow and talking about a, a plan that we can do. We're going to put all the data on, on the website so that folks can see that. I mean, I think it's important for them to take a look at that and see.
Are we going to talk about this at, um, a school committee meeting? Like, maybe a presentation about the data?
Right. We will, yeah. So we, we did that last year, last year or the year before?
Yeah.
It was the year before.
The year before.
Year before. And, um, and then we had the community one as well with NCAP. And, um, we have the assistant DA, so we'll do that again this year with, with you folks, so you get a sense of that data.
Okay.
And I think it's important to look at it as a whole and not just cherry pick some of the data. You know, because you could do that for Medfield and cherry pick some certain things and everything's wonderful.
Right, right.
But I think if you look at the data as a whole, there's, there's certainly some things we need to work on, so.
Now, how are people going to know that that's on the website? Is that going to be?
Send out an email.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll alert people. And I think that'll be on the blog as well.
Yeah, yeah, cool.
So we'll send out an email that will have the, the school calendar like we said we're going to do.
Yeah.
That's going to be next week, um, so that folks get that out and.
Okay, cool.
You know.
But we have, I mean, you know, there was a lot of criticism about that last year, but each of the last two years we have had presentations about it. And I think people either just missed it or, you know, you can only put so much information out.
Right. Right. And I think we had, probably had twenty-five people at the, at the high school auditorium. We had assistant DA and, and chief meeting and myself and others, so. But I, I know that Chris Heron is coming back. So Chris Heron was here a few years ago. He's a, a former basketball player that goes around, talks to schools about substance abuse. And, um, it looks like right around Thanksgiving, he's going to be here, so we're excited about that. We'll be putting a lot out on that to get a lot of folks in there. Because he'll definitely do the kids, but we want to make sure that parents come as well.[1631.64] And it looks like right around Thanksgiving, he's going to be here. So we're excited about that. We'll be putting a lot out on that to get a lot of folks in there. Cause he'll definitely do the kids, but we want to make sure that parents come as well. Cause it's a really good message that he has. So that's.
Do we need to vote these goals or?
You can unless you want to, you want to add some as well. I think one of the things that I, I didn't want to, I want to talk to you about that didn't put on here was policy updates continuing that process. And also I talked to Jim Hardy about getting those online. If that's something we want to consider doing. So those are just a couple of things I was going to add on there, but I didn't, I didn't put it on this initial thing. But certainly if you want me to, you know, we're going to get that subcommittee going again anyway. And if we want to do that project, that's, that's fine too. But you certainly can vote to accept them if you'd like and.
It's a pleasure, Chris.
What, we vote to accept these as the initiative for this year?
Yeah. They're not the superintendent's goals though. They're, they're, they're district ones. So these would more or less be our goals. And the, the policies have been, we've been working on rolling those onto the.
Right.
So I, I mean, that's kind of an ongoing.
It's definitely ongoing, yeah.
Could we, I was just thinking about future agenda items that, and I know we talked about it at the end of last year, the videotaping policy to kind of keep up with that.
Right.
One-to-one device. I don't think kids or, I, I know kids are not aware of some of the trouble that they can get into.
Yeah, and there, I mean, again, at school year, there were a couple Instagram accounts I saw that were.
Yeah, there were some things that probably shouldn't, shouldn't be happening. But I think that goes along with the digital citizenry. If we're doing that, we should have, you know, the school committee, we should have a policy that people know and can kind of be aware of. You know, so kids aren't, you know, sometimes they get in trouble and they, they know it. Sometimes they don't understand because it comes so second nature to them to take a picture of everything, video everything that they're not understanding some of the implications.
It's the way they live now.
Yeah.
It really is.
Is that part of the handbooks at all the schools or at least the high school and the middle school?
There's not a, we haven't promulgated a policy on it yet.
So there's, there's guidelines of what's expected behavior with technology and acceptable use policy.
So kind of that's the umbrella.
That's the umbrella. But there's no specific videotaping or technology use policy from the committee. And when that does get completed, then that would go in the handbooks next year.
And it's going to be out of date in like two years then too. But, but still, it's something that you can kind of work with and you can move, you know, and adjust as needed like the rest of the policies, but.
Why don't we, I'm going to suggest we take the, the district initiatives and if you've got thoughts on them between now and the next meeting, share them with Jeff and decide if it makes sense. Otherwise we'll, we'll bring these back to the next meeting to vote for. Cause I think it's important to vote, you know, to vote those publicly.
Have you voted other years?
Well, no, we've never been presented with district initiatives before. That's my knowledge. So, not in that way.
Okay, no, this is great.
Do you need to give a time, Tim?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, so I think it would be good to publicly say what we're doing.
Yeah.
I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm going to guess there's no public input. Welcome. Welcome back, Tim. It's good to have you back. So upcoming, at the next meeting, I would say plan for a long one because the principals are all here. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yep, they'll talk about how excited they are to open their schools. We will have some early donation approvals and Mike will give us the final report on the FY15 budget.
And I, could I just, just make a note? The 21st is the training.
Right.
Right, so that's.
So there's no business at that.
Right, so those future agenda items will be on the 28th.
Okay.
The following Monday.
And we, we will nevertheless do the training in open session.
Yes.
Okay. And how long do you think for that?
Two hours.
Two hours. Can we do it in here?
Where we'd like.
I've checked with the trainer and see what he thinks about it.
The 21st is our training and then the 28th is the next.
So we're planning on seven to nine on that. It could be seven thirty to nine, whatever you'd like. But we, we're planning on.
Seven to nine.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as I know, right now.
And then the 28th is executive session two at seven?
Yes, the regular meeting, right.
Tim, do you have anything to add?
No.
Ina May?
No. Looking forward to the new year.
No, I met with Steve Grunham today over at Dale Street who was energetic, digging in. And it was nice. It was a great meeting. He seems super confident, ready to, he's been digging in. So it's nice. It's nice to see that there are teachers. I actually was going in when teachers were leaving and said that, you know, people have had nice meetings. So it's nice to see, to see him over there and getting started. So it should be good to hear from everyone.
Good. In past years where we thought an override might be necessary in the budget, we've, I'm not begging to do this, but we've gone to the PIN nights to kind of get people thinking, you know, sort of get people acclimated to that. I don't know. I mean, I know it was a tough budget cycle last year, but we did have, you know, we had a lot of cooperation from the War Committee and I'm not saying we want to start this year saying we need an override.
Right, right.
But we do like to get, start the, at least the legwork early. And even if we didn't think it's not going to be an override year, is it going to be sufficiently tight budget year that we ought to be going in and making just even a very brief presentation of the PIN? Folks, or?
I'm not sure if that's necessary at this point, but you certainly, I mean, the indicators that we have is very similar to what this past year is about.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think if we mention the strategic plan and then the field piece, I mean, that's, the field, the field.
It's about as much as we can bite off in one year.
That'll be a lot, okay. You know, that'll be a lot, so.
Okay. Anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
I, those unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.